Trustee Stevens.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
Trustee Compton.
Here.
Trustee Landwehr.
Here.
Trustee Swenson.
Here.
Trustee Walsh Leger.
Here.
President Vanderstil.
Here. Our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our Chiefs Dean and Bagan.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have comments from our Police Chief, Bagan, and our Fire Chief, Dave Dean.
Good evening. Just gonna make a few comments regarding the 9/11 remembrance and then Chief Dean will speak as well. It is well-known that when there is trouble or danger, irrational response is to run from it. On September 11th, 2001, thousands of people ran from the World Trade Center in New York City. However, running against this rational response were hundreds of dedicated police officers and firefighters. Their natural response was to protect, to rescue, and to comfort and aid the victims of this cowardly attack. Every day, police officers and firefighters work together in this country in the interest of public safety. While there are many incidents of sacrifice for the public good that go on on a regular basis, few moments are of the magnitude that we saw on September 11th. We have heard the numbers: 2,977 people killed in New York, Washington DC, and in a field in Pennsylvania. 343 firefighters and 71 law enforcement officers died at the World Trade Center. We should never forget them, the impact and the impact that this attack has had on our nation. But the tragic legacy does not end here. Year after year since September 11th, public safety personnel continue to die from illnesses related to breathing the toxic materials during the search and rescue efforts. In the last year alone, 30 firefighters and seven police officers have died from 911-related illnesses. Sadly, this will continue for years to come. Our nation was brought together in the common interest of preserving the American way of life on that day. It didn't matter what race you were, it didn't matter how rich or how poor you were, it only mattered that you were an American. I hope that taking time to remember the events of September 11th will keep us united as citizens of this free country. My desire is that the police officers and the firefighters of Heartland can honor our fallen brothers and sisters through dedication to this profession and to this community. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Dave Dean, Fire Chief. As we recited the Pledge of Allegiance, we think of our great nation, and as we defined the title, pledge to promise, to show allegiance, allegiance, loyalty of a citizen to a person, country, or group. As we remember the horrific day 16 years ago that changed our nation, we all remember where we were, what we were doing, and what our response was. We may have been scared, shown disbelief, thought it was a hoax. Did we gather family, call friends, cry for those involved, some even donated blood? Most were glued to the TV. No matter where we were, we will never forget. As Chief Bagan had stated, a few more facts that I handed out earlier. Victims came from more than 90 countries around the world on that day. 343 firefighters, 37 Port Authority police officers, 23 New York Police Department officers, six EMS workers, three court officers, one Secret Service agent, and one FBI agent. The incidents of 9/11 changed our world forever. It has changed the way we train, the way we hold large events, the way we communicate, and the way we operate as a village. We are extremely fortunate to live in the Village of Heartland where we have a dedicated staff of individuals who work hard to ensure the safety of our citizens each and every day. Please join me in a moment of silence.
Village Board. Thank you guys very much for taking the time to do that, and I think it also goes to say that with our children, with our friends, with our neighbors, we're in good hands to know that when we're in danger and when we need to be saved, that it's people like you and the people in your departments that will be coming to save us. When we're in harm's way, you will be there running towards us, not away as the people were in those buildings. And I think that on behalf of myself, the entire Village Board, and this entire village, an outstanding thank you to all that you do to make it easier for us to live without having to worry about something like that happening to us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have public comments for anything or any items that you may have that are not already on the agenda. And seeing there are no public comments, the first item on the agenda is a consideration for a motion to approve the Village Board minutes from the August 28th, 2017 meeting.
Oh, so.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments in the amount of $1,230,738.62.
I move we pay the bills for $1,237.32.62.
Question?
Second. They're moved and seconded. Discussion.
Ryan, Arrowhead Boys Lacrosse, special deposit, a deposit that's under, how come it's under expense description?
Special deposits?
Yeah, that's special $500?
Yep, that's just a refund of a special deposit.
So, it's a refund?
It is.
But it doesn't say it says just it was a deposit. Okay.
It's a refund of the deposit.
Thank you very much. And Dave, educational expenses, $1,016.85, how many people went through that?
Which one is that labeled under?
That was the last thing on ambulance expense?
It's an EMS class, probably one.
EMS?
It was $1,685.50, how many people went through?
That would be one paramedic, if that's for the paramedic, community paramedic program through the UW Milwaukee.
Educate, WCTC?
Yep.
Or if it's WCTC, not Milwaukee County, then it is for all classes from the last semester, which would be firefighter one, EMT, we had a couple in firefighter two, and fire officer. So, it would be a wide range of individuals that.
So, it's multiple people there?
Correct.
I believe that was four.
That was four this time?
I believe it was four.
I think that's.
I have a question.
I have a, okay.
If you're ready, Don.
We're gonna do some tree climbing for $300. Paying the Waukesha Treasure $300 for tree climbing, are we gonna train? I mean, I grew up in a small town, I learned how to try to climb a tree.
Is that the chainsaw safety class?
Recreational programs. Expense, $300 for Waukesha County Treasure for tree climbing, $300.
That would be under, no, that's Kelly's recreation. Oh. Kelly's not here, I mean, my guess is, and I believe it is a recreational class that they offer.
How to climb a tree?
It is. It's for tree climbing. I can get the invoice if you'd like to see it another day. But it's something, I believe there's just a couple students or a couple people signed up for, and it's put on by the county, so we reimburse them.
What are we teaching?
That's part of a class, though, everything that you see like that.
Correct.
And the kids come in and they pay X number of dollars for the class, and then that's, I've asked Ryan before, that's how you pay it back, because they've already paid for it, see?
So, we pay, we're training them how to climb a tree?
No.
Well, they're paying, they're paying the program to have the program set up so these kids take the, and a price is set for every program that the department has. And they pay in, if you get 20 people, if it's $10 apiece, they pay $10, and then you gotta run it through the bookkeeping system.
Okay, so we're, it's just we're training people how to climb trees, okay?
No, but they're paying, they're paying for the program.
Right, right, they're paying us to train them how to climb a tree.
That's the program, that's whatever.
They're paying for tree climbing.
I had that growing up, but that's okay.
It's the falling out of the issues, but.
Well, maybe there's more to it than just climbing the tree.
And then Mike, I got a question on the water utility. We got two bills for July, August for Pembroke, one for 1086 and one for 31580. Right, the 315. Why wouldn't they be together, and why is there's two separate ones?
We probably have two meters, one for the pumping operation, and then the other one, I believe, is for the blower for the VOC treatment at the site.
Okay, so it's just, we got two pumps?
There's, no, there's the electric for the wellhouse, which operates the pumps, and then we have a separate meter that they have a separate charge for another function, which I believe is part of that blower, but I can verify that and get back to you on that.
It's, I just, did look kinda strange having one location with two different bills.
Right, unfortunately, the power company set up two meters out there.
That's the only questions I had. Now they know how to climb a tree.
I have a question.
Yes.
Under the cemetery and under Public Works, proven power, ignition switch for mowers, string for trimmer.
Right.
It's, I assume it's the same trimmer, it's not two separate trimmers?
No, what we would have is, we would charge the cemetery for the string for the trimmer, and Public Works for the switch. So, we're paying that bill under two separate accounts. Because a majority of the string is used at the cemetery for string trimming, and then the maintenance of the equipment is typically under Public Works. So, we charge the material to the cemetery account, but we charge the maintenance of the equipment to the Public Works account.
And that's for lawn mowers, everything?
Right.
That's for anything that's used with each department.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'd like to add that if anybody pays attention to these budgets, the reason this one is so large is that certain fire department got a million dollars, $22,046 truck. That little shiny thing is finally here.
It's not here yet.
It is not, it has not arrived yet, but we are preparing for the final inspection in South Dakota, and.
In South Dakota?
Correct, at its main plant, so if they find anything wrong with it.
Okay.
Right now, it's getting completely refurbished with new tires and paint touch-up, and any problems that they found on the showing of it, electrical, anything, they wanna make it top-notch. They've added quite a few extra things, and the final numbers came in about a week and a half ago of the way that that truck was specked out with the advanced items on it, which I can't thank the village enough for allowing us to do that, and the trust in us to design this truck. As technology changes, as we all know, almost every day, this truck, as it sits right now, that we are paying a million dollars for, if they would retail it out, somebody else would spec out that vehicle, it's sitting at 1.58 million. So, I feel very honored and happy that they were taking the plunge with us to demonstrate and show all the extra technology on that vehicle. So, I'm honored that it's here in Heartland, and I'm honored that you had the trust in me and the department to work on that venture for over three years, so.
You're gonna fix the dents if it comes back with a dent.
Well, let's hope, let's hope we get her back from South Dakota here with no dents in it, but the crew is anxiously awaiting to, for its arrival.
Is that shipped or driven out?
Driven out.
Shipped?
Yep, driven out.
You're gonna add that at the pancake?
Yes, well, I hope like hell, heck, it's here by October 7th.
Yeah. Also, I just wanna comment that the truck, the check is gonna be held on to until the truck is delivered. We're just having you approve it and issue it now because.
Oh, okay.
If they, if the truck comes next week, we don't want them to wait three more weeks on their check, so, that's all.
Thank you again.
Vote. Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Upstayed.
The motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is consideration for, application for operators, bartenders' licenses for the term ending June 30th, 2018, for Matthew Anasenti, Kaitlin Rose Williams, and Brandy Marie McLean.
I have some more.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Those are granted. The next item is an application for fireworks permit. It's from Lake Country Lutheran High School for their alumni homecoming on September 29th, 2017. The application has been approved by Fire Chief Dean.
Oh, so.
Second question.
Yep, go ahead.
Who's doing the fireworks? Is Barrelotis doing it?
It's another company.
Bring a copy of the permit with me. It's another company that also does July 4th festivities and activities.
Okay, 'cause I didn't see that on the application.
We will be there to inspect beforehand and make sure the distance, and we will also have a truck on site.
Okay.
It's like we do for ours here.
I just wanna make sure it wasn't Mom and Dad doing it.
Right, right, absolutely, yes. I did check into it, it's a reputable company, I just can't recall the name of it.
That's fine, okay, thank you.
Used to be that way.
Two.
Yeah.
I remember shooting him off on the meat.
It's been moved and seconded.
You can vote on.
Yep. Mike and Rick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That is granted. Next item is the consideration of a first reading of bill for an ordinance, number 9/11/2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 76 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to stormwater management.
Ms. Brown, we might wanna change President Lamarron's name off of the bottom of that to the.
That's the joys of the override of an old ordinance.
Yeah, the other thing, question is, when I get down to it, thing that Delahart, we've gone through round and round and round with, is the state trying to, with the phosphorus and the cost of trying, everybody trying to get rid of the, this out of the water when it's coming from upstream and we have nothing to do with it, and it's causing, how much is this gonna cost us?
As we had that presentation from our village engineer, I believe, back in June, there are a number of projects that we're looking at. So, we have the easier projects where we get a majority of the phosphorus and TSS removal that we've come up with. I know we have those programmed in the CIP, I don't have it with me today, but I thought that that was under a half million dollars, but if we have the other projects that were identified, in order to meet that smaller bang for the buck, as you'd say, for those projects, those projects could run up to about 1.5 million. So, what we're trying to do is meet the intent of the ordinance and, or the state requirements.
What is the state requirements? We're gonna hit those numbers, or did they give you something generic and you have to come back to them and tell you, tell them what we're gonna hit?
No, they gave everybody that's in the Rock River watershed, specific numbers to hit. I believe the phosphorus reduction is like 76%, but I can get back to the study to see that. And then the total suspended solids is probably around 63%. Initially, we were targeting, the first requirement we had was 20% total suspended solids removals, then it got put up to 40%, and then because we're in the Rock River watershed, they raised those limits up and then added the phosphorus reduction. I can't tell you how much the overall project costs are gonna be to get it, but at least we're going to proceed with a plan to show for these initial projects to try to get the most pollution removal as possible.
That's, I don't want, I don't want us to go over the state requirements.
No, we definitely won't.
The state requirements came to Delahart and said, how far, how much, you know, this is what it is, how much can you do?
No.
You know, and they wanna go higher.
That's why they changed the times, they gave you two years to do it, and they give you another two. That's a DNR.
A DNR is killing us and making us spend, how much is, maybe 100 and 1/2?
It could be, you'll pay around $2 million to do all these projects.
Delahart, we're looking at, what, 15 million, maybe?
Yeah, but what did we pay so far to put the weeds along the river with the DNR? About 10,000 bucks, wasn't it, the last few years?
The water, wetland, water-loving plants, not weeds.
Well, there's, to me, there were weeds where they trampled out, but anyhow.
Yeah, it's probably about 15% of the overall cost of the bank stabilization projects that we had to plant the vegetative material along with doing the bank stabilizations.
But that was about, if I remember right, around 10 grand or more, wasn't it?
Some projects were probably around 10,000, some projects might have gone up to around 20,000.
And that was to keep the Bark River so it don't run out. I lived in Heartland for 80 years, and the Bark River looks the same as it did when I was playing in it myself.
Right, what the planting do is it helps filter off any pollutants that run from the soils adjacent to the river.
And then Delahart picks up anything that's over that, so it's like.
If we send it down to Delahart.
You send it to us, and Delahart takes care of it.
That's right.
And it's, but yet we have to spend this much money so that Delahart can spend additional money, and it's like, who's on first here? I mean, I know we have to comply, 'cause you're gonna comply, I don't want you, don't ever exceed any of these requirements, because as soon as we do, that's gonna be our new standard, and we gotta go better. And they're gonna cost us millions.
Well, what gets me is, three or four years from now, they're gonna change the standard, and we got a new target there.
Well, if it, what bothers you most is once you pass that chalk line that goes to Illinois, they don't have any rules or regulations, and it goes down there, they do whatever they want with it. But our laws are right up to that chalk line.
See, but what you could do is, we're paying for Delahart anyhow, what we could do is tell them to heck with it and send a dollar to Delahart, fix it. We're paying in both ends.
There's really three components related to stormwater here. There's the wastewater treatment plant that handles the water that comes out of our houses. There are the stormwater treatment facilities that you're talking about a little bit with Mike, that are the storm ponds and things of that sort. And then there's this, and this piece relates most significantly to the development of land in the village. So, these are the rules and regulations that property owners, private property owners have to adhere to as they're developing their lands. So, the ordinance that you have in front of you now is the third wheel, or the third spoke in that wheel of improving the phosphorus situation in the Rock River or whichever river it happens to be.
That's right.
So, this, this set of regulations you have in front of you are the pieces of information and pieces of regulation, and as we explained in the memo, are the technical standards that we've been adding into our ordinance so that they're available and clear and enforceable, if you will, for private property owners as they develop their lands. Now, some of these things are the ways that we'll do our own work, transportation and things of that sort, but this is geared primarily to those private property owners, correct?
Yes, we wanna have our citizens pay more.
Well, I don't know, what, what we really want is for them to put the proper facilities in so that water leaving their site is as clean as it can be before it gets into the rest of the stormwater conveyance system and into the Bark River, because as you're pointing out, as the permit holder, the village is responsible for that, so we're trying to make sure that the private property owners are doing the right thing.
So, we're not gonna put salt on the roads, and they're not gonna put salt on the driveways, and they're not gonna have water softeners, and then we're all set?
No, we decide either.
We at least have the floods taken care of.
It's actually more cost-effective to treat the stormwater at each individual site, as opposed to letting it collect and then have a regional collection area that gets treated. So, that's why we're trying to be as cost-effective with the improvements that are being done by each and every property owner, and try to make the lowest cost to make the biggest impact for reducing pollutants.
So, we're doing it for them, but we're gonna pass about, what, 100 and 100 and 1/2? It's gonna cost us about 100 and 1/2 to do this?
Oh.
Plus than what the property owners are gonna have to pay?
Over the next probably five years, we're might be looking at about a half million dollars in projects.
And plus what the citizens are gonna be paying.
Correct. As they develop the property, they'll have to put in various treatment measures.
See, why do they, you know, do they ever come out and look at this? Now, they got that big pond by St. Charlie that's supposed to take care, I have never seen any water in that as long as I lived there, outside of a bunch of junk that people and flour, we, or papers and stuff blow in. There's never been a drop of water in that.
One of the proposed projects is to improve that low-line area in order to get some more pollutant reductions.
Dig it deeper?
Right, we will be making.
For what?
To channel the water off the Rensen Road area.
There's still, as long as we fix that corner on there by that manhole, every time it rains too much, that water is always sitting in the road there, don't go into the, that hole in the ground over there.
I'm just saying.
Lower their hole.
I have just a real quick question.
Yes.
On the table three that has the separation distances and soil characteristics.
What section are you at, I'm sorry?
I don't know, it's page 11, I guess.
Is that table three?
Yeah.
Yes.
Does, you and I have discussed the situation over on industrial court with the flooding when it rains, and that there's no ditches beyond where my office is, the water just kinda stays there. Is this going to help fix that? Are we gonna finally put in some ditches so the water can actually flow down into the swamp, or the, I don't know, what do you wanna call it down there?
To the marsh.
The marsh.
Right, as we've talked before, we are planning a project to improve the drainage through there, so it might involve a little bit of filling by that property where you have your business, and then to be able to continue the flow of water down towards the marsh area.
Well, it was my understanding when the new businesses went in, they had to actually dig their own, pay to have the ditches dug to a certain depth, because that was actually about four feet higher, and I know the ones that went in afterwards don't have a ditch at all.
Right, well, what you probably had there is that some sediment has blocked the infiltration of those ditches, that's why they're probably holding water, so what we'll have to do is get down to that area that can infiltrate the water better.
Well, there's nowhere for it to go because it stops right at the driveway. There's no ditch beyond our back.
Right, and if we have to do some ditching further south of that to make it to the marsh area, then that's what we'll be looking at.
Is that part of this?
No, this is a different subject there.
Okay.
So, we had, the board approved a ordinance change last year, which met most of the requirements of NR 151. After we completed the TMDL study that our village engineer presented, I believe, back in June, now we go to this phase, and as Administrator Cox mentioned before, we had two separate documents, now we're combining them into the one ordinance. So, for the past 12 years, people developing property had to refer to our ordinance and our technical standards, now we'll have it all contained in the ordinance. And the village attorney contacted me today, he's not done reviewing this document, but if he has any changes, we'll bring that for the second reading.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
So, just to be clear, Mike, I'm just, so the, the two documents being put into one and were already in existence.
Correct, yes.
It's already exactly the way we were following it, it's just the compilation into one ordinance.
Exactly.
I just wanted to make sure.
Probably some updating.
Oh, Jim.
Yeah, for the most part, it's a, it's a compound.
Yep.
Isn't that something?
Okay, that was.
Just the first reading, so.
Okay.
And the date on this also was 2016.
Okay, I'm sure that'll be updated, correct?
Yep.
It'll be updated. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve resolution of 9/11/2017, a resolution pledging that the Village Board of the Village of Heartland will expend funds necessary for the Heartland Public Library to exempt the village from the Waukesha County Library levy.
Did you forget the summit?
I believe I did. Can I go back to it?
Well, that's why I bring up the library first.
You can do it either way.
I accidentally missed one.
It's just the second reading of an ordinance, so.
I'll go back to it. Do we even have to do anything?
You're just gonna back up and as a reminder that that's coming through, no changes to the ordinance have come, we haven't received any telephone comments from anybody at this point on the change.
So, it depends what the state tells us what our equalized value is, then they, then we can figure out how much it's gonna cost us.
On the library, right.
Yeah.
Are we on the library now, we're gonna, 'cause I have a question.
We can go to the library.
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing.
Yeah, go ahead with the question.
I just didn't want you to miss that.
No, no, I appreciate it, I, that was my mess.
There's no motion necessary and anything.
I missed it.
Could, could you just explain where it says the funds are distributed, it talks about to avoid double taxation and the levies. Explain to me the levies versus, our citizens are actually paying for the library through taxes, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And if they weren't doing it that way, they'd go through a levy, which is a tax also.
They're both levies. It's just a matter of whose levy it's on. So all, all, let's start at the very basic. All residents of Waukesha County and every other county in the state gets levied by the, by the county or taxed by the county a tax for libraries. Okay? That's, that's the foundation on which all of this is built. If a municipality chooses to have its own library, in order to exempt their residents from the county library tax and levy their own tax, their own municipal tax, they have to adopt this resolution which basically says, "We're going to tax our own residents at least as much as the county would have taxed them."
And we've always gone well over that.
Well...
Well, there's money and Karen's probably telling you, you know.
Well, why would you go over what the county or what the levy was?
To fund the library properly.
Okay, so there's a basic minimum amount that you're required to levy, and that's the county's levy.
Right.
The municipality can choose, as this one has, as Trustee Swanson mentioned, the municipality can choose to levy more than that to support their library and have a more extensive collection, a more...
Better library.
A better served library, whatever you, you know, whatever the case may be. This community has chosen for a long time to levy beyond what is required of us in the calculation that would be made.
The majority of all the libraries in the county levy more than what the minimum is. And the reason there's a minimum, you would have communities that would have a storefront library just so they can get out of paying the tax. And they would not have a library that would really serve their community.
Approximately how much are we over whatever the levies?
Oh, I'd have to look it up.
On average?
Well, I could probably figure the math here.
Nancy has the exact, I know when I talked to her, she said, "The funding that the village does is, is over, but it's not much over." That was her statement.
And then if I'm not correct here, what happens then? You can borrow a book from anybody from when you had the county.
We now have two counties that you...
That's what I mean, see. So then you get a better service completely with the whole thing.
And then, and the other part of this equation is that the, the taxpayers in the rest of the county who are paying the county tax, that money is pooled together by the county, and then the individual municipal libraries, based on how much use they get from those non-residents, that is, non-residents of the municipalities. Based on that usage, the county doles out the taxes that it collected for library services.
Oh.
Because the county doesn't operate any libraries. It depends on the municipalities that choose to do so. So the county then will send a certain portion of library taxes to each of the municipalities based on usage. And that's a formula that's been worked out among the municipal libraries in this county.
Is it specified anywhere? I mean, does this money have to go into reference material, books, tapes, whatever, or can it go into the building?
Goes in the library.
It goes to library operations.
Oh, okay.
None of, none of the levy goes for bricks and mortar. It all goes for operations.
Operations, okay.
And it's like, what, 60% of the people, 65% don't live, don't use it? Is that, I've heard that.
There's, there's just a tad more that are non-residents that use our library, but that's all kept track of.
Right.
And it's all part of the funding process. We are reimbursed. You know, we're, we have a lot of communities around us that don't have libraries, Sheneka, Neshota, Town of Delafield. But they're all paying into the system and we do get, we cook this money.
In addition to what we're paying?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, they pay for it. And it is, it, when they say a county, if I went to the library right now and wanted to take out a book, and they don't have it, but they have it at Pewalkies, I can go right over there with the same card and get it. Or I can go to any public library in the county. Or I can even ask them to purchase it. So everybody in the county is able to be part of this system using the reference material and all that. But so also what this creates with that minimum, it keeps any, let's call it municipality or town, from being able to not have a library and then not have that tax because everybody's got to give because everybody uses it.
But I don't want someone to think either that, okay, I'm, I'm in the village, I pay taxes, I would pay the taxes toward that. We get money back from the county for the levy. That money does not come back to me as a taxpayer. It goes back into the library system.
Correct.
Goes into the library. We get, we're budgeted next year to get...
I just want to make sure that was understood.
We're budgeted next year to get about $230,000 from that particular funding source.
Okay.
The other, the county library aid.
And if the county wouldn't give it back and you wanted to keep your library up, then you'd have to pay, you'd have to pick the money up anyhow. You get the service.
However, and it should be noted that when that money, when those funds, I should say, come back, it is, like we just said, there's a certain amount of percentage, whatever that percentage was, is slightly higher of non-Heartland residents. There's a few more that use it that are not from Heartland. It is kind of a testament to our community because they're coming here. But also, the county is sending the money back for that because those people somewhere paid that tax. So they're able to track it enough. So the money comes back and goes to the library because they paid that tax somewhere. But they paid it to the county instead of to Heartland.
Right.
See, and then if you want a book that they don't have, you just ask them and they'll give you three days or whatever it is and they'll have it down for you.
Right.
In, in 2017, the village's budget was $445,000 of levy for library services.
What year was that?
2017.
I'd like to still move that we make a resolution pledging the village board of Heartland to extend the funds necessary for Heartland Public Library to exempt the village from the Waukesha County Library tax.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Don't, don't we go through this every year or every two years? It seems to, you know.
Every year you have to do it.
The motion's carried. So that I don't, I do not need to go back again. We addressed that last item on the agenda because it was a reading.
Yep.
Consideration of a motion to approve a request to extend operation of the Beer Garden in Nixon Park for the weekend of September 16th and 17th only. So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion from the public or the board? Do you want, do you want any space?
Get samples?
You want to say what your intentions are?
Can we get samples?
I didn't bring any with me, no.
I was going to steal a glass, but I didn't want to pay $50 first.
Well, you'd be one of about 300 that did.
Yeah.
If you could just name the business.
Yeah, I'm Patrick Entor. I own Enter Sports Grill and I run the Lake Country Beer Garden this last summer. So in a conversation with Dave a couple of weeks ago, we just thought maybe it would be a good idea to give people a taste of the Beer Garden one more time. We waited as long as we could to see what Mother Nature was going to hold for us this coming weekend. This weekend is the official start of Oktoberfest. And we just thought this would be a good weekend. Your church festivals are done. St. Charles Festival is done. Most of the ethnic festivals are done. So we just thought maybe this would be a good opportunity to, to do one more weekend and then we'll talk about next year at a later date.
Are you going to have dancers there?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to have dancers there like they have in Munich?
Uh, no.
You're going to put on a, no?
Depends how much beer they sell.
No. Once this passes tonight, I'm going to work on trying to find a couple of bands for the weekend. Not bands per se, but we were down at Estorbrook last week and they had the guy playing the saxophone and the guitar and another guy playing a tuba. And so I have some names of some people. I'm going to try to get ahold of and hopefully, you know, with Oktoberfest already starting, it might be booked up, but we're going to try. We're only going to operate from noon to 7:00 both those days. But right now, the weather's very favorable, predicted 75 and 80 degrees, so we're keeping our fingers crossed.
Well, you did a good job. I haven't heard a comment about it that, I mean, that's against...
You know, we, we were amazed. I know I had a conversation with Chief Bagan at one point. The police department had no complaints and literally we had, we had nothing but compliments the whole way. Go to our Facebook page, you'll see all five-star reviews.
I haven't heard, yeah, they were all good comments.
Yeah.
Gary, nice job.
Thank you.
I'm happy to see you're doing something for Oktoberfest. I think that's pretty cool.
Thanks.
Now, what, two days or what, one weekend?
Saturday, just Saturday and Sunday.
This Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, this Saturday.
Now, if the weather stays nice, would you go another?
No.
What happened to Friday?
You're done.
Well, there's this thing called Arrowhead Football.
Oh.
And to try and compete with that, and obviously with the restaurant, that kind of ramps up our business. So I wasn't planning this, so I wasn't staffed for it. So we're, we're going to staff for this weekend, but to go beyond, next year we will, you know, obviously we'll try to do a longer season next year and then plan ahead for it, so.
Good idea.
Well, you've got more experience then with this year now.
That's, that's correct. But as I noted, we continue to do, we continue to do research as well. So we were at Estorbrook last week, just, you know, honing our skills.
Research.
Sounds good.
I feel fortunate to go with you when you do that, though.
I'll, I'll let you know next time.
You haven't backed the trailer across the river yet so that you can walk.
No, I haven't done that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Guy. Good job.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Announcements? I believe that we have a few. Whoever would like to go first can sprint to the podium.
Just wanted to remind you and all the citizen, citizens, Wednesday, September 20th, we have the public budget meeting at 5:00 PM in the same room.
Is there any cake?
Cake?
Yeah, you got cake?
That's this, that's this Wednesday. We get the cake, don't we?
I gave trustees and the board a flyer earlier. Upcoming Pancake Breakfast and Blood Drive at the Heartland Fire Department, hosted by the Heartland Fire Department Association, is October 7th. Mark your calendars. Love to see you there. Flight for Life will be landing. I can donate blood. Your Choice Wakeup Call tours will be happening. And we're excited. On the last note for me...
What time is Flight for Life coming? Do you know?
Flight for Life is going to land between 10:30 and noon. Give us a little bit bigger window.
Where's it going to land?
They will be landing in between the softball field and the fire station.
And there's no game going on that day?
No games going on that day, I'm aware.
They'll move quick if there is.
That's right.
Hey, the, get pancakes. You don't need to get blood, right?
Correct. I'd like, we'll check you. You might get a little discount if you gave blood first and then we're going to have pancakes.
Yeah, might fade, who knows?
We have people there on scene for that as well.
Oh, trust me, they do.
We eat pancakes with all that surf.
We'll take good care of you.
I, I do have an announcement, too. We're done.
I think he's still going.
I have one more. I'd like to, in, tonight, our friends over at CLD Graphics in the industrial park, they have two large buildings here, provided the Heartland Fire Department with an appreciation dinner for all we do. I would like to invite the village board to stop by the firehouse after the meeting and have some food. And there is cake.
Chief Spigot, you talk to me in the...
Thank you.
Save me an N P C.
Also, on October 8th, which is a Sunday, is the Buddy Walk again. That's for the Down Syndrome. And if anybody wants to join a team, we've got, my company's sponsoring a team. So...
October 8th, you said?
October 8th is a Sunday. It's fun. They have a lounge. They have giveaways and auction items. And you do actually do a walk with the kids and it's a real nice afternoon.
All right. Any other announcements?
I move to adjourn.